I'll call to order the Fortuna City Council meeting for Thursday or Tuesday, February 20th, 2024. Please join me for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Councilmember Lozey?
Here.
Councilmember Mobley?
Here.
Mayor Protam Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Trent?
Here.
Okay, our first item is introduction of Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. I'm very pleased to be able to present two key members of our Parks team tonight. The first one I'll introduce is Heather Stevens. She's our new Director of Parks and Recreation. Heather has over 20 years of experience in athletics and recreation, including working for Blue Lake Schools as their Athletic Director, the City of Blue Lake Parks and Recreation, and working for the City of Blue Lake as their Parks and Recreation Director, and over 15 years of experience supervising and managing Arcata's recreation programs. Heather's getting up to speed very quickly in her thoughtfulness and ability to work with others is quite evident. Heather has already developed a long list of improvements that she wants to make at our city parks and to our recreation programs. I think it will be more of a challenge to make sure she doesn't take on too much all at once, rather than worrying about her being able to take things on that are going to improve. But really, it's been great so far to have Heather on. It's been a week, and already it's been wonderful to see her interactions with our other park staff, our maintenance, River Lodge staff. We've had a few staff meetings already, and everything is going really well. So with that, I'm really pleased to announce Heather Stevens as our new Parks and Rec Director. And if you want to come up to the podium and say a word or two or more, if you'd like.
Thank you, Mayor. It's an introduction. I'm very happy to be here. I do feel like I've arrived, you know, I've jumped in with those feet, which is what I said I would do. So I'm very much looking forward. There's so many projects that the city has going forward. I'm excited about our recreation programs and growing them, and you're going to be Courtney in a minute coming on as well. So I'm excited to work with you, see your visions, and to move us all forward while enjoying the moment. So thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to Fortuna.
And so maybe Heather should be doing this one, but since Heather came on on Monday and Courtney came on last Wednesday, I get the pleasure of introducing both of them. So I'm equally pleased to be able to present Courtney Cadel as our new Recreation Program Supervisor. Not only has Courtney received a bachelor's degree and master's degree in education from HSU and USC, which will bring a high level of educational experience to our recreation programs, but Courtney attended and worked in our recreation programs as a youth and as a leader for four years. Courtney is coming to the position with an intuitive sense of how things have worked well in the past and many ideas of how she can make our programs better. She's already receiving some of the feedback on Facebook from the community and thinking about how we can improve and do things better where there are comments indicating such. Courtney worked with our previous Recreation Supervisor, Tony Wilson, who ran the program for many years before retiring from the city. Courtney is also an athlete and played basketball and softball competitively and coached high school and middle school sports, including winning the Fieldbrook Schools' first volleyball banner and a championship basketball banner. I'm looking forward to see all the improvements Courtney will be making to our programs and opportunities for enrichment she will bring to the city programs for our local children. And so, yeah, both Courtney and Heather both have played sports, volleyball and basketball. And so not only will we have the recreation programs, the Parks programs, but also managers who are experienced with both youth sports and adult sports. So we're looking forward to having both of them on board, and I'm very pleased to be able to introduce both of them tonight. So Courtney, would you like to say anything to the council, the public?
Thank you, and I'm really excited to get this opportunity. If you don't know, I grew up in Fortuna, graduated from Fortuna High, too. And like Mayor said, I've worked for the city of Fortuna pre-COVID, so I'm really excited to get this opportunity again and just happy to be able to give back to the community that gave me so much. So, thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. Next, we have oral comments from the public, and this is for any item that is not on the agenda. Anybody would like to say anything? You have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I just would like to make an announcement. On February 26th at 5:30, there will be a virtual Humboldt County Town Hall with insurance commissioners, Cal Fire, County of Humboldt, and United Policyholders. You can register online for this at Humboldt County, the Humboldt County website. And I would suggest that if you have an opportunity or time to do that, that you do so you can get updated on what fire insurance looks like in our region. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? It's the end, then we'll close public comment, and we'll move to the consent calendar. We have 12 items on the consent calendar. All of our monthly reports, report of dispersments, approval of a contract with specialized paving marketing for minor street striping maintenance, application, I got to put my glasses on, can't see. Approval of contract with GR Sundberg Incorporated for minor concrete maintenance, and review of the, review and approval of the mayor's recommendations for appointment to the Planning Commission, and a supplementary budget request for an additional 50 chairs for the parks facility. Anybody want to pull any of those?
I'd like to make a comment on, I believe it was E and F.
E and F. Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to commend Sergeant Finney for his completion in the Leadership Academy and what he's accomplished there, and remark about how you guys cover the streets and keep towns safe. So it's very much appreciated. I'll just pass that along to him.
Thank you. I certainly will do that and make sure that our patrol staff knows as well.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any public comment on any of our consent items?
And then I wanted to commend the Public Works crews for all of the storm work that had to be done, slipouts, trees, plug drains and all that. It's to keep the streets, roadways safe and usable during this has been a challenge, but thank you for all you guys do. Thanks.
Okay, anyway, any public comment on any of these items? Okay, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have a discussion item. Natalie Delap, did I say that right? Okay. North Coast Growers Alliance, Measure A.
Natalie.
Natalie, sorry.
And there's one word, which is the Humboldt County Growers Alliance. And just want to say thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I'm going to turn it over to our Policy Director, Ross Gordon, to lead the presentation.
Thank you.
Well, thank you so much for the time tonight. Really appreciate the time two weeks ago as well. We'll try to keep this relatively short and not go over again what I blew my mind over two weeks ago. My name's Ross Gordon, and I'm a Policy Director with Humboldt County Growers Alliance. We are the trade association that represents cannabis operators here in the county. I work closely with Dillon, and I appreciate the opportunity to present on Measure A. And I did send this presentation along last minute. Is it possible to, like, leave slides remotely?
Absolutely, yeah. Just let us know and actually can.
Can you just leave it on?
Okay, great. Yeah, the rubber, you want to use a green light on that?
It's not. It's red.
It seems to be a thing with our microphone. I don't know why that is, but even when you put brand new ones in at the beginning.
We need to make sure we turn it off at the end of the evening, probably.
Great. How's that? That seems much better. Great. So maybe just starting with some general background on Measure A. So as I think you know, Measure A is a 38-page ballot measure. It's going to appear on the March 5 ballot with ballots being mailed out. Many folks have already voted on it. And it's really a comprehensive rewrite of the rules that govern cannabis in Humboldt County. So it's a very detailed initiative. Much of what it does is amend the general plan with pretty detailed policies applicable to cannabis cultivation, all of which are more restrictive than our current policies. And since Measure A has become available to help, become available to the public originally as the Humboldt Cannabis Reform Initiative, it's been opposed by really, as far as I know, an unprecedented coalition of leaders within our community. So the Humboldt Democratic, Republican and Green Parties are all opposed. The sheriff, as well as the Humboldt Deputy Sheriff's Organization, all of the folks running for supervisor, as well as all of the people challenging for those supervisor seats, and many more we can talk about are all united in their opposition to Measure A. Since our last meeting, the Rio Del City Council also considered a position on Measure A and unanimously voted to oppose as well. So the question I hope to be able to answer today is why there's such strong and united opposition to Measure A. If we can go to the next slide. So I think it helps to start with some historical context for how we got to this point. And really, the inception of our current cannabis ordinances, probably as many folks know, was really an attempt to really rein in the green rush. And in 2015, when there were conversations about legalizing cannabis in California and Humboldt were developing our ordinances, there were an estimated 15,000 unregulated cultivation sites within the county. And some of those folks were acting responsibly and some of them weren't. And so there was a conversation that really involved every segment of our community that included environmental groups, law enforcement, farmers, local and state regulators, on how to develop a system which was really going to be protective broadly of the things that we want to protect as a county. So really, the questions were how do we protect the environment? How do we protect public safety? How do we protect neighborhoods? And I think a really vital part of that process that everyone understood was you can't protect the environment, and you can't protect public safety, and you can't protect neighborhoods if you don't create a framework that's also going to be reasonably viable for people to enter into. If the legal framework isn't worth entering into, then all the, you know, great things you might hope to accomplish with all of these regulations to protect the environment or neighborhoods, they're not going to matter because you're just going to have illegal cultivation for folks who are outside the regulated market. So from our perspective, it's really important that everyone came together and worked on those two ordinances totaling 143 pages that we have today. Can we go to the next slide? So that brings us to sort of where we are today. And I don't think anybody thinks our ordinances are perfect, but they have gotten us to a certain place, which is much different from where we were in 2015. So right now, we have about 1,000 permitted farms within the county, down from 15,000 prior to legalization. There are 335 acres in permitted cultivation, which is about 0.52 square miles, obviously a very, very small percentage of Humboldt County's landmass. Most of these farmers are very small farmers. 60% are under 10,000 square feet, 98% are under an acre in size. And the system under which farmers are regulated is incredibly complex and detailed. So Berkeley did a study recently that found the average time to receive a local permit for a cannabis cultivator in Humboldt is 28 months. It is not an easy process, and that's just at the local level. That's not accounting for all of the regulation from Department of Fish and Wildlife, from the Water Board, from the Department of Cannabis Control, Department of Pesticide Regulation, all of which have a very, very significant hand in regulating and inspecting cannabis farmers. Can we go to the next slide? So entering into this conversation about two years ago is Measure A. And Measure A, I think it's really important to say, was developed without this process of collaboration with all of these different stakeholders and groups, environmentalists and law enforcement and farmers. So the proponents will say, and it's true, that they talk to people. And they talked to us, and I'm sure they talked with a lot of people about cannabis policy, or about ideas for how the ordinance might change. And a lot of people have a lot of ideas for how the ordinance might change. But what was not part of this process was any type of public review for the document that was ultimately put together. So the actual 38 pages, which were submitted to the Office of Elections, March 5, 2022, that document didn't receive public review. It was drafted by a San Francisco law firm. I don't know how many people saw it, but it wasn't very many. We certainly didn't see it. And that document really proposes to rewrite cannabis regulations in Humboldt. And when we saw it, we were pretty aghast with what we saw. It really was a document that had a lot of problems, and within a week, our Policy Committee had voted to unanimously oppose it. And start getting the word out on what was really in this document. Can we go to the next slide? So since that time, the opposition to Measure A has really grown incredibly. I won't go through all of this, take everyone's time, but just to give you a sense for the real unity in opposition here, this has been framed as an initiative to help small farmers. That's how the proponents gained many of their signatures. Small farmers universally oppose this measure. The proponents have been asked many times, is there any small farmer, permitted farmer who supports this measure? I haven't heard a single one. I don't know a single one. Universal opposition. It's been framed as an environmental measure. Most of our environmental groups have not taken a position, are neutral on this measure, and many have said quite critical things about it. So if we can go to the next slide, can start getting into the reasons why there's been such universal opposition. So the Humboldt Planning Department put together an analysis of Measure A in March of 2023. They had an amended one that they put forward in June of 2023. And both of them reached the same conclusion, which is that Measure A, what was at the time the HCRI, was written to make compliance so difficult the legal market would not be viable in Humboldt County. And I think the second quote there, there's a lot of things in the initiative that are problematic, but this is the one I really want to emphasize, just for the sake of time, that Measure A has been written essentially to prevent farmers from modifying their permits in any way, including environmental improvements on farm. So this is not just a measure about new farms. It's not just a measure, you know, about a few things here and there. It's not just common sense regulation. Really, what it does is freezes every permit in the county in the place, in place, without the ability to make modifications. And on the next slide, I think there's some, one example, there's actually a few, but one example of why in the measure. So I think the really critical, most critical definition within the measure is the definition of expansion. And the proponents have been pretty clear, they want to prevent the expansion of cannabis farms. And so expansion is specifically defined within the initiative on pages seven and eight. And that definition concludes by saying, "Examples of expanded uses include, but are not limited to, an increase in cultivation area, water usage, energy usage, or the number or size of any structure used in connection with cultivation." So when this initiative talks about expansion, and when the proponents talk about expansion, they don't just mean more cultivation area. They mean any building used in connection with cultivation, or anything that increases water usage or energy usage on a farm by any amount. And that's why the Planning Department concluded that Measure A would prevent installing environmental improvements like water storage or ground-mounted solar. Those are structures, but not just that. And I know the proponents will contest that. I think it's quite clear that it does restrict them. But even if you don't think it restricts those environmental improvements, because as the proponents claim, you think they intend for it to be an environmental initiative, so it shouldn't be read that way. There are lots of other things that farmers need to do just on a farm, like build a barn or a drying shed, or maybe, you know, build some infrastructure to facilitate on-farm tourism, or do just about anything. And those things are structures, and there's nothing wrong with that. There's a process to permit that, and that's fine. So it really, this really broad definition of expansion, I'd say is at the heart, in many ways, of our concerns with the measure. And I want to say, Councilmember Johnson, you said something that really resonated at the last meeting with your experience with insurance policies, that, you know, we're really looking at the text of what's written here. And it can be argued to be ambiguous. I think you could argue that. I actually think it's pretty clear, if you look at this definition. But we expect what's written in here to be applied to us. And that's really where the concern comes from. It's not a question of intent. It's not a question of what anyone hopes it might be interpreted as. I mean, we're looking at the black and white of what this is, and it's really alarming to us. So if we can move the slide maybe again, I want to address the idea that this is an environmental initiative as well. So there was an analysis put forward by the group Cannabis for Conservation, which takes, it's a nonprofit, accepts funding from Department of Fish and Wildlife to do conservation projects on cannabis farms. And they found the initiative is not based on evidence-based policy. And I think maybe most importantly is this last paragraph here, that in their discussions with all of the different environmental groups and regulators, there wasn't consultation or agreement that this was the approach that was needed from an environmental perspective. And so from my perspective, to claim that something is environmental initiative without buy-in from any of our regulatory agencies or law enforcement is something that I think should be held to a high degree of scrutiny. Can we go to the next slide? Lastly, just want to mention, you know, the conversation in 2015 is probably many people know. In particular, UC Berkeley had really raised an alarm about unregulated cannabis cultivation sites and the impact on a lot of resources. And I think it's worth seeing, however you felt about that initially, kind of where UC Berkeley has gotten to today. And they published a brief about two weeks ago that says that really they feel that the best way to address these issues is to encourage a functioning legal market. If you don't have a functioning legal market, you don't have people following environmental or other regulations. And so I think that's really the overriding concern if you want to achieve any other purpose with our cannabis regulation, is making it viable. Can we go to the next slide? So without getting too much into all of the fine print in here, I wanted to highlight a few other provisions in here that I think are important. I think it's really important this measure amends the general plan specifically, which means that there's then going to be a requirement to amend the other 143 pages of cannabis ordinances to align with those general plan requirements. And if that alignment is not to anybody's liking, whether it's the proponents liking or anybody else's, there's a very high degree of possibility of lawsuits. If there's any ambiguity in the text, which I think there is, any disagreement over interpretation, how do you assess that other than litigation? As mentioned, it would restrict or prohibit structures, including environmentally oriented structures. It would heavily restrict new licenses for nurseries and processing activities. I think the inspection provisions in here are really worth looking at. The proponents have sort of framed this as, well, farms aren't being inspected. The situation right now is that the county inspects every single farm. Some are done by satellite, some are done in person, and that's in addition to inspections that farmers are getting yearly from the state agencies. So there's lots of different inspections by many different agencies. Some are done currently by satellite, that's a practice. But what this initiative does is goes a good step further than that, and it says that a permit must be renewed annually for cultivation. And if there is any outstanding complaint against a farmer which has not been investigated by the county, that permit cannot be renewed. So the standard that's in the initiative is not an investigated complaint, that, there's no requirement that the complaint have any grounding. There's no requirement that there be any due process. If there's a complaint against you as a farmer, and it has not been investigated, your permit cannot be renewed. If your permit is not renewed in the middle of a cultivation season, you have plants in the ground, you are illegally cultivating cannabis. You are not legal in the county, you are not authorized for a state permit through no fault of your own, without any due process, your permit has been pulled. And I think it's a good example of where the initiative starts with things that may seem like, okay, it's just a little bit of a stricter regulation. And then it goes a step further to be something that's punitive. Like, we could argue about whether expanding the cultivation of cannabis farms is a good idea or not. But that's not even what's in this initiative. This initiative defines expansion so broadly to include basically anything, and that's why to us, it starts to feel punitive at a certain point. Can we go to the next slide? So just a few last things here. I think there's a big question. It's been asked of the proponents many times, and I don't know if they'll be calling in today, and if so, I'd be interested to hear them answer this question. There are 621,000 acres of agriculture in Humboldt County. There are 335 acres of cannabis cultivation permitted in Humboldt County. What is the reason why Measure A considers cannabis farms to be the problem from an environmental perspective or anything else? I think it's important just to be clear about it, and I haven't heard a clear answer from the proponents. And if we can go to the next slide, when the proponents were asked this question at the Cal Poly Forum, which was held a few weeks ago, their answer was essentially, they said their attorney had informed them that an initiative can only tackle one subject at a time. So they chose one subject, and that subject was cannabis. And then they said at this meeting, basically, that there's a lot of interest in applying all of these rules to other forms of agriculture as well. And this is something we're starting to see with land use initiatives. There's an initiative on the ballot in Sonoma County that applies to conventional non-cannabis agriculture that's very restrictive. The law firm that wrote this measure in San Francisco is well-known for writing these types of land use measures. And so from our perspective, it really, you know, it is a cannabis issue, but it's also something which is much greater than cannabis, because it gets to the question of how do we want to make decisions about land use? Do we want to make decisions about land use on the basis of a collective conversation where everybody's interests can be discussed and heard, and we can come to a common ground solution? Or do we want the loudest voice in the room to be hiring attorneys to rewrite laws and go out and tell people it's for the small farmers when it's not? And, you know, end up with these very, very convoluted discussions about 38 pages of text, which my preference is always to work through disagreement and try to improve something. And unfortunately, because this is an initiative, it puts us in a yes or no place. We don't have the opportunity to seek amendments. We only have the opportunity to say yes or no. So I think maybe I'll end there. I think it's really important, you know, as a ballot initiative, if this does pass, the vast majority of it cannot be amended without another vote of the people. So to the extent there are drafting errors in this initiative, disagreements over interpretation, we realize down the line that maybe the policy wasn't as great as the proponents thought it was. The only way we're going to be able to resolve that is an additional ballot initiative. And I think both of those options are bad. I think not being able to amend our ordinance is a very frightening thing. And I also think having to come back every couple of years and have a whole election about how we want to regulate cannabis is probably not what anyone wants. I think generally, most people would like to discuss cannabis less and just have a functional policy in place, rather than bringing this back to the voters every, every couple of years. So really appreciate your time and hope you vote today to oppose Measure A. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Okay, I'll open it up to public comment. Anybody in the public want to comment? If you do, you have three minutes.
I wasn't prepared, but thank you again. I'm Polly Kinsinger. I'm a resident of Fortuna and a cultivator here, out 36. I spoke with you last week, and so, or two weeks ago, and so everything I said back then resonates with me still. And I hope to encourage you to recommend a no vote on Measure A for the residents of Fortuna. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I was here two weeks ago, too, and I gave a lengthy comment. Hopefully, it was memorable, so I don't want to repeat it. I do want to just reiterate a few points, or make a few points. And one of those is, farmers like myself in Humboldt County, we are basically the last in the state that are holding out from corporate consolidation of an industry. And we're familiar, again, of disappearing industry. So if Measure A does pass, what that would do would be effectively help them capture the industry and hand it off. And we'd once again be out of a renewable, sustainable industry that can, is a really strong driver of our economy. And so that's just something I do want to reiterate with you guys. And again, thank you guys for your time and your very good questions you guys asked two weeks ago. They were really appreciated. Thank you, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I was also here a couple of weeks ago, but I want to just reiterate what I said at that time, too. If you don't have the information, please seek it out. Read the initiative in its entirety. And also, I would like to read something tonight, if I could. Cannabis is subject to the most stringent water protection of any agricultural crop in the state, in Humboldt County. And in Humboldt County, the Planning Commission goes above and beyond those rules to require hydrologically analysis of anyone relying on a well to confirm that cannabis farms not, not, will not be depleting the aquifers that they serve. Other wells for nearby surface waters and incentives, or requiring extra storage, and the transition to rainwater catchment. Sorry, I don't have my contacts in. This is from Noah Levy, and this is a planning commissioner with Humboldt County Planning Commission. And he has been, you know, tough on permitting and really is very thorough in his analysis. And those are his words on Measure A. And so I really encourage you all, and the community in a whole, to really just investigate Measure A and to read it. Also, I get this, I get a, an agricultural magazine every week for my ranch, and I thought it was really interesting that they have analysis of water. You can see the North Coast here, and this is all going down Southern California. 9.9 trillion gallons of water per year consumed by food for food production, 8.2 trillion gallons per year consumed by food for food production. 8.2 trillion gallons of water per year to produce food and fiber. Not enough water to mention cannabis in this article. And I can reference to the article if you'd like to read it. Just food for thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I just want to say thank you for your time and for your consideration. And I know that this is a cannabis issue, but I really would also encourage you and voters and people who are listening to think of this as a business issue and ask yourself, what would you think if voters were coming after the industries that you represent and wanting to regulate your industry by voter initiative? So that is really what we're talking about. And we have a lot of industries here, from timber to fishing, mining, or not so much mining anymore, but gravel extraction and dairy and ranching. And then, you know, typical businesses that are in town. And now, when people get upset or disgruntled or they don't feel heard, if they think that the best idea is to go and rewrite the regulations for that industry, that's what we're facing right now. And it takes the conversation out of the hands of the legislature and the regulators, and it puts it into the hands of the voters. And as already mentioned, this is a highly complex issue. And what is very likely, you know, if Measure A comes to pass is what, as Ross mentioned, we're going to see series of regular, every two years, because this could only be voted on every two years when supervisors are up for reelection. And so we're talking about an industry trapped in gridlock that can't be fixed or amended until a subsequent voter initiative goes through. And then we're talking about whose dime is that on? Is that the county's dime that has to put out this initiative every year and convince 51% of voters to pass this? So that is really what we're talking about. This is really not the way to address complex land use concerns. That is the quote from Friends of the Eel River that they published on, I guess, on Sunday. And so Measure A is not the way. We have a process through our county. We have supervisors and planning department who are willing to work with our constituents. We can have this conversation in public. So we ask you to please vote no and support us in not getting trapped in this kind of future syllabary slope. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
You know, I'll just mention, too, the counsel, you do have an opportunity. This is a discussion item tonight. We do have a special meeting on Monday, which if you did want to direct staff to put a letter, you know, opposed or supporting Measure A, you have the ability to do that before the election. But the election's coming up really quick. Absentee ballots are out, so you have the ability to continue discussing this and your opinion or to, if you want staff to write a letter one way or another, we could have that on Monday's agenda.
Okay. Comments from counsel?
We could put it on, discuss it on Monday.
Put it on Monday's agenda?
Well, I think if the counsel had inclination to go one way or another, you could. You don't have to do anything else if you want to direct staff. Tonight would be really the night to discuss, to direct staff to put a letter on one way or another if you want, and to approve that on Monday. But to discuss it again, then we wouldn't have a letter to approve, so.
Okay.
I don't know if it makes sense to discuss it again. I think councils should kind of put their opinion out there or just leave it where it is with the input that we've received, both for the proponents and opponents of Measure A.
This initiative on the ballot reminds me a lot of propositions 47 and 57, 109. They sounded really good on the ballot when you read them, but when you go into the details, there's a lot more hidden in there than what it is. I would, in my opinion, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, but I would say to go ahead and oppose it.
You need to have that motion to that.
This is a discussion item, so it's really just if you have just direction of staff, we can't vote on anything on this one. But if you want to direct us to bring something back, we're happy to. If not, then leave it where you're at.
I'm all for opposing it as well.
I am, too.
Can I bring a letter back, please?
I would just like to make a comment, a couple of comments. I'm opposed to Measure A also. But I want to take this opportunity to thank Mark Thurman and Elizabeth Watson for bringing this measure forward and providing a real frank discussion about some of these areas that are, that many people in Humboldt County see as very important. So I think that the Board of Supervisors now, they have a chance to make some changes in the current ordinance and incorporate some of these ideas that have been brought forward in Measure A. And I think that's really going to be important down the road unless you want to see another proposition or measure that comes about. Because I don't think if, I really don't think this will pass, but I don't think it's going to die on the vine either. So some of these changes have to be made, or we're going to see this back.
So you're looking right at me. I so want to respond, but I know it's not working.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Okay. You got it?
Direction noted, yes.
Yes, well, except for Kyle.
Yeah. Thank you. And thank you for your presentations. Okay, we'll move on to city council business. Our first item of business is approve a supplementary budget request for the transfer of funds within the police department fiscal year 2324. Approve budget to expense the cost of the department's unmanned aerial vehicle.
Lieutenant Everhart will be providing the staff report for counsel.
Good evening. Tonight, be presenting this SBR. In December of 2022, the purchase of the department's unmanned aerial vehicle, UAV, came forth in front of counsel so that we could utilize National Opioid Settlement Funds. This was a new program at the time. The chief and the city attorney did their due diligence. They looked into the matter. Everything showed that this would be an approved expenditure with the settlement funds. Unfortunately, when we went for reimbursement of the $8,000, it was declined as ineligible as the program was new and they were still defining parameters. So due to this, we're asking tonight to utilize funds within the current police department budget as outlined in the staff report and utilize $8,000 in funds within our current line items to cover this expenditure. We are continuing to explore options for utilizing the National Opioid Settlement Funds, and there's no financial impact as this will all come out of our already approved budget.
Any questions from counsel?
Just clarification. So these funds have already been expended, and so we're just shifting from one area to the next?
Yes, that is correct. We've already made the purchase. It's proved to be a beneficial tool for our agency, and this is just to move funds within our budget to cover that expense.
Okay, I'll open public comment. Anybody from the public have a comment on this item? CNN will close public comment.
I'll make a motion to approve a supplemental budget request for $8,000 to expense the cost of the UAV.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please. Councilmember Lozey?
Yes.
Councilmember Mobley?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent? Yes. Okay, our next item is opposition to AT&amp;T California Application A.23.03.002 to relinquish eligible telecommunications carrier ETC designation and AT&amp;T California Application A.23.03.003 for relief from carrier of last resort obligation.
Thank you, Mayor Trent. Our new community development director, Sherry Meads, will be presenting this presentation. But I'd also like to thank, before Sherry presents the staff report, I'd like to thank Supervisor Bushnell for really kind of running this up the ladder and bringing our attention to this issue because it has the potential to affect many people in the community.
Good evening, Mayor Trent, Mayor Protem Johnson, and esteemed council members. I'm Sherry Meads, the new community development director. And before you tonight, as we just discussed, is a letter that is drafted in Mayor Trent's name to represent the City Council of Fortuna in opposition to this application that AT&amp;T has submitted to the California Public Utilities Commission. And it's really important that we stand with the other jurisdictions across California in opposing this measure because ultimately, if it is approved, basically, there could be no telephone provider obligated to provide service in areas right now where AT&amp;T does act as the carrier of last resort. And we've seen in wildfires and other emergencies where sometimes the landline's all that's going to work. And in these rural communities where this is potentially going to have the most effect, it's often the only option they have is a landline to stay in touch with their families. It doesn't have to be just emergencies. It's just their reach to the world. So that's the "too long didn't read" summary. I can go into far more detail if you have questions, but ultimately, you know, we would just like to stand, this was a request from you guys to draft the letter, and we just want to stand in solidarity with everyone and say, this is not a good idea. So with that, the Community Development Department recommends the council authorize staff to submit a letter of opposition to AT&amp;T California Application A-23-03-003 for relief from carrier of last resort obligation to the California Public Utilities Commission. And I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel?
No questions. I'm just, I very much support this letter to be sent. I have my doubts that the CPUC is going to heed our requests. We've seen this over and over, and especially with the latest increases that were granted to PG&E, and probably going to see some additional increases with PG&E down the road. This is AT&amp;T, I understand that, but the Public Utilities Commission has shown that they really favor these big corporations, and that's sad to say. Thank you.
Well, having traveled all over Northern California and specifically right here in Humboldt, you can have great service and then go five blocks down the road and you're in a no zone. And for some people, I've read comments from PUC members, from AT&amp;T reps, and, you know, although we can supply people with a wireless phone, and I can tell you from experience that not everybody has had experience and knows how to use a cell phone. And not every, some of the places where I've been have no coverage for cell phones, or if you take the copper wire out, won't have anything there for that either. And for some people, it's like you said in your report, it's not just for health, but it's for communication to your family members and your social groups and your church that you belong to, and you could be stuck with nothing. And it's not a good idea, and it's, leaving people stranded is never good with no means of communication. So I wholeheartedly oppose what they're trying to do.
I just want to say that this is actually scary because we live in a community that there's a lot of places that don't have cell service. I just had an elderly lady tell me last week that she was a little concerned about this because the monitor that she wears to fall goes through landlines. It doesn't go through cell phones. So, you know, and they're worried, you know, the elderly is, are worried about, you know, that's a life-saving device that they have on, and so it's a big concern for them, too. So I would definitely say to authorize the letter that I already signed. Okay. Do what? Oh, public comment on this item. I was getting there.
Thank you, mayor and counsel. You know, I listened to the presentation and talk about the rural areas. Your rural area is four miles from here, and it's Carlotta. And there is no cell service in Carlotta at all. And from Carlotta to Densmore, there is no cell service. From Bridgeville to Alderpoint, there is no cell service. There's no cell service in Edersburg, Shelter Cove, Honeydew. Those areas are all in this district and all people that funnel into your towns. And it is, you know, about communications also, but it is about safety. Mayor, you referenced to the life buttons. They all run through landlines, and those areas allow for people to live rurally and have their independence. And so the CPUC, if they're not going to grant or tell AT&amp;T that they have to provide service, then they need to have an option for us. That's what happens with, you know, utilities. Private utilities have commissions, and they're obligated to provide services to us. On this Thursday at 2:00 and 6:00 in Ukiah at the Mendocino Board Chambers, they are having a hearing there. I will be speaking there, and so will Rex. He'll be speaking, Supervisor Bone, sorry. He'll be speaking at 6:00. I'll be speaking at 2:00. And I will be very firm in my belief that there needs to be options for the rural areas of Humboldt, but also the rural areas of Northern California. So thank you for considering this letter tonight.
Can you tell me where that meeting is and the time again?
It's in Mendocino Board of Chambers in Ukiah on Low Gap Road, 2:00 PM and 6:00 PM.
Okay. Also, Ferndale has a lot of areas that doesn't have cell service.
There's so many, yeah. I was referencing to my district. Thank you.
Yeah, well, Ferndale's close, too.
I just want to make one correction to what you said.
Okay.
Fortuna is rural. We might not be as rural as Carlotta or Bloxburg or some of those areas, but we are a rural community.
So the entirety of Humboldt is rural. There are 38 rural counties in California out of 56. And so Humboldt, probably next to Trinity, is one of the most rural. So even though someone that live in rurally might consider Fortuna a eureka urban, it is not, and you are correct. All of Humboldt is very rural and very dependent on the services that are provided. You referenced PG&E earlier. We already, cost of goods for rural counties are extremely high than urban settings. And so that just is going to add to how much harder it is to live and to maintain in this area that we really want to be part of and live in. And it's really imperative that we at least have phone service. So thank you again for considering the letter.
And thank you for all you're doing with that. It's very appreciated. iPad went dead here. Our next item of business is...
Sorry, I need a motion in a second.
Oh, sorry.
Do you need a motion?
I thought that was, yeah, I thought that one was just...
I'll make a motion to authorize staff to submit a letter of opposition to AT&amp;T California Application A.23.03.003 for relief from carrier of last resort obligation to the California Public Utilities Commission.
Second, if necessary.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now I can move on, right? Authorize the city manager to execute all documents necessary to purchase real property at 624 Main Street and accept property and approval, and approve a supplemental budget request, Resolution 24-05, 2024-05.
Thank you, Mayor Trent, counsel. So just a brief summary. The city of Fortuna owns the Monday Club meeting facility at 611 Main Street in the city of Fortuna. The historic home adjacent to the Monday Club at 624 Main Street was burned in a fire approximately four years ago. The property owner of the parcel Rachism approached the city with an offer to purchase property in 2021, but that offer was not acted upon. And really, that property owner really thought that that property could complement and be a nice addition to the Monday Club. Recently, the property owner received multiple requests from developers interested in purchasing the site and developing the site. And really, that property owner really thought that that property could complement and be a nice addition to the Monday Club. Recently, the property owner received multiple requests from developers interested in purchasing the site and developing the site. And again, the property owner approached the city, expressed their interest that the city really should consider purchasing this parcel rather than see it go into other types of development. The parcel's approximately 0.19 acres, and it lies directly east of the Monday Club and has significant potential to improve the function and experience for users of the Monday Club. Some of the ideas for use could be a courtyard for outdoor use, create parking spaces, improve accessibility, and reduce maintenance by removing nuisance trees that are right on the property line that lean over the Monday Club facility and ADA ramp. So the intended purchase of the parcel will be to complement the existing uses of the Monday Club facility. The council designated the city manager as a negotiator on behalf of the city on January 16th, 2024, and directed me to negotiate for the purchase of the property. We received a broker's price opinion for the subject parcel from John Egan, a local real estate broker, with the opinion value between $140,000 and $155,000. That's attached to the staff report. On February 5th, the council authorized the city manager to make an offer on the property in the amount of $147,500 and split the cost of title and escrow with the owner. The owner has indicated their willingness to accept that, and I emailed them the purchase agreement. So I expect them to sign that and return it if this is approved tonight and to open escrow. In order to complete the purchase, the closing documents must be executed, a supplemental budget request identifying where the funds for the purchase will be taken from, and authorization must be granted for the council to accept the parcel. The council must also find that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, and therefore, staff recommends that the council adopt resolution 2024-05 to grant the city manager the necessary authority to complete the transaction, accept the parcel, and find the project is exempt from CEQA. Additionally, the council is being requested to approve a supplemental budget request in the amount of $160,000 to fund the acquisition of the project. And the funds used for the purchase will come from the general fund reserves and be allocated to fund $108,000-5450 Parks and Recreation capital outlay. And I apologize for the long title, but we're getting multiple things done with one motion, so.
Do we have a motion?
A public comment or questions?
I keep forgetting that one. Open public comment. Anybody from the public have a comment on this item? See, and then we'll close public comment.
Just a question. On the resolution itself, on the 1, 2, 3rd whereas, and the fourth whereas, it says government code, yada, 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 authorizes the city to acquire any real property within or outside the district by negotiated agreement. And then it talks about the district in the next whereas also. Really confused because the city's buying it, not the district. Like, I guess that was maybe...
Yeah, and that came from our attorney. I didn't catch that. So we can change that to city and make that change with the approved.
I think it's important.
I agree.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I do think this will be a great addition to the city. And may not be developed until further down the line, but it will help with the Monday Club, people renting it and using it. So thank you.
I agree.
I did have to say that because on Measure E, we could not have the funds to do that when it came up before.
Has there been public comment?
Yes.
Okay. I'll move to adopt resolution 2024-05, read by title only, and authorize the city manager to execute a certificate of acceptance for parcel with APN number 040-105-005, an approved supplemental budget request in the amount of $160,000 to fund the purchase.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bear with me a second. Resolution 2024-05, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Fortuna accepting the real property in the City of Fortuna and designated as assessor parcel number 040-105-005, and authorizing the city manager to fund enclosed escrow and find the acquisition to be exempt from CEQA, and authorize the city manager to execute a certificate of acceptance for parcel with APN 040-105-005, and approve supplemental budget request in the amount of $160,000 to fund the purchase. Councilmember Losi.
You read as fast as I do.[890.13][890.13](Laughter) Yes.
Councilmember Mobley.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson.
Yes.
Mayor Trent.
Yes. Okay, city managers' report.
Okay, just a few items to report tonight, but first I'll go over the meeting schedule. So we have that special workshop on February 26th at 9:30 a.m. And again, that'll be to just consider revenue generation models, and then also to approve a letter in opposition of Measure A. We have our next regular city council meeting on March 4th. Our next planning commission meeting is on February 27th. Our next Measure E meeting is on March 19th. And at that meeting, we'll be accepting proposals from staff for Measure E projects. So we have staff working on ideas for projects for that meeting, and as well as bringing back the projects that we heard from the community. Our next runner, Community Recreation and Park District meeting is on March 6th. And then I believe we canceled the Fbid meeting for February 27th. So I think we have -- will be sending out a cancellation for that meeting. So with that, I'll just say a couple things that I have that I'm working on. I've been working with our consultant, CSG consultants, to finalize a franchise agreement to incorporate the requirements for SB 1383. That's taken quite a bit of time, but we're hoping to kind of peel off. We've been working with a larger group, trying to really have a consistent franchise agreement, but it's been taking a long time. So we're going to peel off and really just focus on the city's franchise agreement, and we hope to have some progress on that soon, really with the target of implementing some of the solid waste and recycling requirements by, you know, shortly after July, between July and October of this year. And then on, you know, to that end, we are seeing a number of costs for that, but we applied for and received one of the Cal recycle grants for solid waste for $75,000. So we just received notification of that today. So some of these costs that we're paying for CSG to help us with our franchise agreement, some of the capacity studies that HWA is doing, we do have funding for that. And so far, we've been keeping it within the grant funding amount that we have from last year and this year. So that is good. And I will say that HWMA did vote at their meeting before last to send a letter to the city requesting that the city join HWMA. So I will be placing an item on the agenda for March 18th, have Eric Keller Hegman to present to the council on what that would mean, what they would -- what services they would provide for the city, and what the costs would be. There's been kind of a long history with the city and HWMA, and some of the bigger disagreements were the cost to do closure on some of the landfills that were operated by the county. And so the city pulled out of HWMA, but more recently been working with them on a number of things. One, they provide our household hazardous waste service. We've been working collaboratively on some of the projects to build capacity for organics recycling. And I think they would like to see all of the cities be members and direct their solid waste there. And so we'll go through the upsides of that, what benefits they would provide, and then more importantly, what's it going to cost for the city. And so we'll have a decision to make on that in the near future. But it would add another layer of bureaucracy. There'd be another committee assignment for the council, and then more meetings to discuss solid waste. So we'll be bringing that back, probably as an informational item or a discussion item, and then ultimately to consider whether or not we want to consider joining HWMA. But I will say that we've really appreciated working with HWMA and all of the other jurisdictions, you know, on some of these pursuits where, for SB 1383 in particular, where if we did them all independently, it would take a lot more time and a lot more effort, but we've been able to really be more efficient in working together. So this could be another example of that as well. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Real quick, did you -- the February 26th special meeting, what time was that set?
9:30.
Okay, thank you.
I think it says 6:00 in the staff report.
And I missed it.[1129.13][1129.13](Laughter) 9:30 a.m.
Any future agenda items? I actually have one. On our next agenda, can we have our voting member put on there? Because we do have our League of California Cities meetings coming up, I believe, the end of next month, and we do need to have that approved before those meetings. Okay, and moving on to city council reports. Councilmember Losi.
On February 12th, I attended the Parks and Rec meeting, first time for quite a few months that we've had a Parks and Rec meeting. And as was mentioned, our new Parks and Rec Director, Heather Stevens, was introduced and was present, as were new commissioner members Patricia Gomez-Gillard, Darrell Jackson, and Frank Mathis. And we also welcome back the returning commissioners, Joe Vassal and Julie Wilson. Right, Joe?
Yeah.
And who have put in many, many hours. Am I getting that right? Anyway, and we appreciate their outstanding service to our Parks and Rec program. Our commissioners, the new ones as well as the returning, bring just a variety and degree of experience and backgrounds that will really benefit Heather as they guide -- she and they guide our program forward. And we advised, or we were advised at that point, Courtney Cadel had been hired as the rec supervisor, and she was introduced earlier today. And as was mentioned, this is exciting. She's got a teaching degree and grew up in the programs in the Parks and Rec department, so. The Hotshots Basketball Program got off to a positive start. We have over 270 players. The 30 teams play on Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 at the Park Pavilion, and from 9:00 a.m. until 5:00 at Tati Thomas Elementary School. Also a reminder, just a reminder that the adult basketball is going on. It's drop-in basketball Thursdays at the Pavilion starting at 8:00 p.m., and the cost is $3. And then drop-in volleyball is Sundays for ages 11 and under, starts at 5:00 and goes until 7:30, and then adult volleyball kicks in at 7:30, and the cost there is also $3. Of course, we have pickleball every Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and that's a cost of $3 starting at 9:00. And last Monday, we actually had probably, this last Monday, over 40 people who played pickleball. It was crowded. And then this afternoon, I attended, the mayor and I both, and as well as Merritt, attended the ribbon cutting celebration for the expansion of the Eil River Brewery. Oh, yes, and Michelle was there, obviously.[1324.83][1324.83](Laughter) The expansion of the Eil River Brewery. So congratulations to Ted Vivitson and his entire family. It's a great addition to Fortuna. That's it.
Did you say Joe Hardcastle?
No, it's Walt. It's Walt. Walt.
Walt, that's one.
When you asked, was it Joe, Julie? It's Walt. The man.
And Joe Hardcastle is not on that committee?
No, I didn't say Joe.
Oh, I thought you said his name.
No, he said Joe Vassal.
Oh, okay.
Joe Vassal.
Okay.
And Julie.
And Darrell Jackson.
And Darrell Jackson.[1363.21][1363.21](Laughter) Okay, that's the end of my report.[1369.26][1369.26](Laughter)
Mike, could I just -- or Councilmember Losi, could I just offer one item to your report that just reminded me? Is we are going to try to have the Parks and Rec Commission play a more active role. We're going to be taking some time and bringing them a series of our projects to really update them on things like the Newburgh Park Expansion Project, the projects that we have grants out for, for park expansion. We're really going to try to utilize that group more than they have. They've had a number of canceled meetings. They haven't met for some time. And so we're going to try to be consistent and then really kind of seek to use that committee in a meaningful way, including having them, you know, send recommendations to the council for what they should -- think should happen for parks to be able to advise the council on those items.
I think that's an excellent idea. I was actually going to talk to you about maybe having a monthly meeting, at least for maybe six months, until we get, you know, Heather, you know, going and the different programs. Might not be -- we can talk about that again.
Okay, Councilmember Mobley.
First, I wanted to say how much I appreciate Parks and Rec for their school break coverage. I don't know if it was full, but we signed our granddaughter up to go, and she really enjoys it. It gives a good outlet for all that energy. It wasn't advertised very much, though. So I don't know if it is full to capacity or not, but advertising might want to be something. And I realize we didn't have anybody really in place to do that. For committees, I had a RCEA Community Advisory Committee. There was a lot of talk about the PG&E increase. So I would say if anyone has any questions about that increase, to navigate to the Redwood Coast Energy Authority's website. They are putting quite a bit of good information and links on the increase, things that people can do to bring the cost down. Just check it periodically. And the RCEA meetings I've had have been closed sessions, so I can't report on that.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Well, I've had kind of a quiet time, I guess, but had an HCOG meeting a couple of weeks ago, and then we approved the county's local transportation fund claim, and a lot of money for transit, about $147,000 for roads. We also approved the TDA Apportionment Transportation Development Act apportionments for all the jurisdictions in HCOG. And the biggest thing for HCOG is the overall work plan, which is the budget for that, and what's going to happen, what HCOG is going to be doing. You can look at that, see what the projects are going to be. You look at it, and you think, man, that's a big number. It's over $3 million. But about two -- a little over $2 million of that is grants, and HCOG is a pass-through for that. So it shows up as income and then as an expense, so. And as Mayor Trent said, coming up, we have the Cal Cities Redwood Division meeting down in beautiful downtown Willets. And actually, I'm looking forward to going. I got some businesses down there I like to get into and try and stay out of trouble. But looking forward to that, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you. I'll start out with, I just got a text from Chief that said, "Tell everybody hi, and he misses us." He's anxious to get home. He's learned a lot back there and bring all of that good information back. And he says you're doing a great job.
When will he be back?
Yeah, in March. And then I'm sure everybody has heard that Providence is closing their outpatient labs in all of their providences. So we had a meeting with them. Supervisor Bushnell and I were on that meeting, talking to them about how our area is going to be serviced, because we don't have another lab in Fortuna, that -- an outpatient lab. So they were confident that they have something in line, so they are actually going to have a public meeting to go over what their plan is. They promised that they would not close the one at Redwood until another one was in place. So we will be having this meeting. We've got it set up at the New Senior Center on Roneville Road this Thursday, February 22nd at 9:30 a.m. They will have a lot of the top executives from Providence. One will be on Zoom, and two will be here in person to answer questions, go over what their plans are, and hopefully relieve all of our stress and worry about that. So Supervisor Michelle Bushnell and myself are putting on this meeting, so we're hoping that our community will come, get the answers that they need, and we're hoping they're going to give us the answers that we need.
Zoom option.
Oh, and there is a Zoom option on that, too.
Will you be putting that on Facebook so that we can share it and get it out to plenty of people to participate?
I can record it, and I'll hopefully put it on the mayor's page.
Yeah, and I can also put the invitation. I think I may have that on my mayor's page, but I'm not...
It's online as well.
Yeah.
Would you repeat the location?
It's on the New Senior Center on Roneville Road, and the address for that is 3811 Roneville Road. It's kind of...
It's by Amberzini School and Redwood Empire Roofing.
Kirby Thomas.
Yeah. Across from Open Door, kind of all in that area.
You guys don't post, do you? Yeah.
We just lost it.
Yeah.[1742.13][1742.13](Laughter)
And that meeting is when?
This Thursday.
Nine?
Yes. Yes. Oh, and if there's any seniors that need a ride, they can call the Parks Recreation. We will provide free rides to and from that meeting. And I think that's all I have to report also. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Meeting adjourned.